Good evening. It's June 8th, 2021. It's now 5:30, 33 PM. There's special meeting of Georgetown County Council is now being called to order. We would ask Councilman Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and further to do the best we can do as good stewards of the land and resources for Georgetown County. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into the approval of our agenda, I'd just like to make one particular comment really. There have been several videos being circulated throughout the past month, or maybe even two months really, with programs being conducted by our PR department. I just want to give a kudos out to them for the fine work that they have been doing with it, so with those particular productions. It kind of make it easier on council for the community to know what's going on. So we really appreciate the work that you have been doing, our PIO and PR staff. And thanks to our capable administrator, thanks for putting the program together. We really appreciate that. It makes it kind of easier on us for the community to know what is going on with throughout the county and what the amenities are within the counties also. Thanks all. So I mean, thank you for that. We appreciate it. Thank you for the PR department. Now we're going down to our approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Okay, agenda approved. By virtue of the approval of the agenda, there have been, there are four procurement matters which have been approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Contract number 19082, approval of change order number one with coastal structures corporation in a total amount of $140,695.78. Contract number 20-055, the approval of task order number two with Creston Engineering in a total amount of $178,250. Procurement number 21-010, contract awarded to Securus Technologies of Carrollton, Texas, providing the county with a 75% 6% commission on phone calls and a 20% commission on video visitations. Procurement number 21-05, awarded for professional service agreement to Internet Development LLC at an estimated annual cost of $200,496. We will move down to the report to council. The first report would be pertaining to US 17 Georgetown County Corridor Study, Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I wanted to take this opportunity to welcome and introduce Mark Holweller with the Waukamaw Regional Council of Governments. He is the Assistant Director of the Council of Governments and he's also responsible for the Grand Strand Area Transportation Study, or GSAT's Metropolitan Planning Organization, of which Georgetown is a part along with Ori and Williamsburg Counties. He's here tonight to give us a presentation on the corridor study that was funded by GSAT and prepared by consultant AECOM. This study involves future improvements to Highway 17 along the Waukamaw Neck from the bridges up to the Ori County line. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mark for his presentation and report.
Thank you, Holly. I'd like to introduce, if I could, Mr. Dan Newquist of our staff who's here tonight, and also Ms. Sarah Smith, our executive director. Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you for the invitation to come before you and update you on the progress of the US 17 Georgetown County Corridor Study. I would be remiss if I didn't extend a thank you to the members of our steering committee that we've been working with for over two years now, off and on, lately mostly off rather than on. But the county staff, our staff, SCDOT, the Coastal Conservation League, Coast RTA, and then the citizens group consisting of Mr. John Sands, David Gunling, Tom Elias, Tom Stickler, and Mr. Greg Farmer who has recently passed away, served on, or still serving on that committee, I guess, until we put this to rest, to bed. Thank you for the opportunity. Give you an update on what's been going on to this point. We are negotiating currently with AECOM for an additional public in-person meeting. The details of that have yet to be worked out, but that is ongoing. I've talked to them as late as this afternoon on trying to set that up. Just for the background, for those of you, I know some of you are very familiar with our planning process and others are not. GSAT is the local planning group responsible for prioritizing and programming federal dollars for transportation projects. It was established in 1990 by the US Census and the Federal Office of Management and Budget. We have a 24-member policy committee made up of mostly elected officials. Four of those officials reside in North Carolina. Of the map that we have up there right now, if you can, I'm kind of visually challenged right here to see what I'm looking at. The blue outline is what we call our study area boundary. That's the planning area that we're responsible with. And you see that's a fairly large area. At the bottom is Winyaw Bay and Georgetown. The cluster in the middle is Myrtle Beach heading out 501 to Conway. And then up north of that, the solid black line is where we cross into North Carolina. Just to give you an idea, a better idea of what you're looking at, the golden rod color, the darker yellow, is what is called the urbanized area. That is based on population density formulas. That's our core area. That's what we get federal money based upon the people that are inside of that area. The canary, the lighter yellow color, are urban clusters. Those are areas that have reached the density requirement but are not contiguous with the urban core. So as you can see, we've got that cluster in Paulies, Litchfield, and a cluster down in Georgetown, as well as some clusters up north of Shiloh in North Carolina. GSAT was designated in 1992 by the governor of South Carolina. At that time, we were responsible, that urban core was about 50,000 population. That's the threshold for being designated as a metropolitan planning organization. 10 years later, we were in the two Ori and Georgetown counties and we had over 100,000 population in that same planning area. And 10 years after that, we crossed the 200,000 threshold, which is a whole new designation inside the federal system with a load of extra planning requirements. It's that time where we added Brunswick County into our planning responsibilities. If you would flip to the executive summary. The previous study was completed in 2003. It was at the request of Georgetown County at that time that that be done. It was on the heels of a study we did up in Surfside that the people down in Georgetown County wanted to emulate that product down in Georgetown County. In the update, what we're doing is we're taking the existing 2003 study. We're removing projects that have been done. We're removing projects that are no longer practicable, feasible, because of the built environment mainly. And then we're adding projects that deal with the additional traffic volume that we're experiencing in the next 25 years. It has always been the aim of these studies to exhaust all the alternatives before a six-lane cross-section would be put on the table for consideration. That was part of an initial long-range plan. The public input that we had at that time was overly, overwhelmingly against the idea, just the visual look of that cross-section going through Paulies and Litchfield. So we took our cues from that and we introduced access management solutions to try to push off into the future any need for a six-lane cross-section. This study recommends the use of reduced conflict intersections. It's a relatively new technology, not off the drawing board, but it's been around for a while, but it is newer. Roundabouts, and we are recommending up in the upper portion of Merle's Inlet from Bellamy, the post office north, a reconfiguration of the existing lanes. Right now, if you look at the width that's out there, it's more than six lanes wide now. And what the plan does is propose to restructure those lanes to make it more streamlined and safer for the general public. If you would like to go to the video right now, the visualization. This is a, that's an intersection location. The flyover is the first one in the queue. It's the animated visualization of the corridor from south to north. We're looking at a roundabout. It looks like...
Which intersection, sir?
It's not an intersection. It's the video, the visualization video. It's the first thing in the group when you go on the website, top one. Well, when we get it queued up, what you'll see is a bird's eye view of flying the corridor from the south to the north. You'll notice some of the local businesses that have been animated in, coded in, and it'll take you all the way up to the, the last section is the six-lane section up in Merle's Inlet. I can't see it. Georgetown County US 17 Corridor, video link. I think we got it. This was an add-on after we had finished most of the work because some of the recommendations we thought were a little bit difficult to visualize in the mind's eye or in two dimensions on a piece of paper. Here we go. That's a little fast, but... It's South Causeway. Hatched-off area allows for U-turn movements. There's an RCI right there. You have those are both signalized and unsignalized depending on amount of left turn, left turn volume. Up to true blue. You can see the bike path along the right-hand side. Will be some new signals around the Litchfield Country Club Drive entrance. That's a particular problem that we had been looking at. This is showing you the close-up of the North Causeway intersection treatment with how to safely and the shortest path possible to cross for pedestrians with a refuge in the middle to do it in a two-phase signal instead of crosswalks all the way around at the outstretch of the intersection. And it's executing a U-turn there at the North Causeway. What it does eliminates, takes the left-hand turns out of the intersection, which facilitates a safer, less conflict, less serious injury type of accident. Now we're up in the Bellamy, and here's where we're looking at the new proposed restructured six-lane cross-section. One of the things that has been closed off is the exit or the entrance, entrance to the hospital north of Riverwood. It's physically open, but you see the yellow X there for not open to traffic. And so emergency vehicles can still use it while taking all the traffic out of that intersection. And when we get up to 707, you'll see the treatment of that intersection, which takes the turns out of the intersection, moves them east on Sunnyside, and loops the traffic back around most of the built environment to reconnect back up with 17 north of the intersection. And we're just showing that a semi can indeed make that U- And now we're just showing that a semi can indeed make that U-turn if necessary. Not that that would be maybe part of a final design. This, this is conceptual in nature. There's no final, you know, it's not even preliminary design. This is, this is all conceptual. And here's, here's the intersection where you're showing you the traffic movements. If you would want to take a left, you would have to loop around and come back straight through the intersection. If coming from the west, that's the path you would have to take. The only left turn movement that would be allowed is the one coming out of Sunnyside and taking a left on 17 southbound. And that movement is still, is included because there are so few cars actually making that I think we can probably move on from, from here. I don't, unless you, unless you want to, we have animation of, of five intersections where we have proposed roundabouts. That's all, it's all on the website. It's been up there for a year. You can, you can take a look at it and be glad to answer any questions if you have about those particular locations. We looked at, on page two of the executive summary, gives you a list of all the intersections where we did our data collection, background, traffic, turning movement counts and volumes. And those are all analyzed in this report. On the next page, it maps out those locations. You can see our, our study area was not just 17. It was the area between Inner Coastal Waterway and the Ocean, which took in Business 17 and Merle's Inlet, and we have some recommendations on River Road and Old Kings Highway as well. We looked, we looked at those. At the bottom of that page is a list of intersections and the dates when they will fail. And failure for an intersection, it means delay has gotten to a point where you're going to sit through several cycles of the signal before you're able to get through the intersection. And, and personally, to me, the most surprising one on this list, and maybe it's because I don't get up that way enough, was the, the new configuration at 17 and 707. And that, that is on a course to fail in 2022. And I would say that's a result of all the development west of there. We're seeing problems at Tournament Boulevard and 17 that are related to the development back there with the neighborhood Walmart, and it has gotten down into Georgetown County. So that, that's surprising. There are two recommendations, two different treatments. A intermediate recommendation for that treatment that was animated, you just looked at, and another one that deals with putting in an interchange at that location. And that's, that's in the long-term recommendations. If, if you go to the next page in the list of projects, the ones that, that jump out to me, and this is, I mean, we could go through every one of these, but I don't, I don't know that you want to spend the time doing that. Near-term projects, and these are mostly what, what we would call the low-hanging fruit, things that can be done soon for a minimal amount of money in terms of what average project costs are. And, and number nine is adaptive signal timing. Currently, we have seven signals on the Walkham on Neck that are adaptive reactive signals. They are set up to give as much time to the main line as possible. If there are no cars waiting on the side streets to come out into the main line, it'll keep the red ball on those locations and it'll be activated when cars arrive. So it's not set up on a, on a loop timer, and it's not just one car activated. If a car pulls up, it'll wait for a break in the main line flow before it gives it the red, the, the green light on the side street. So that, that can be done. We can add to that system. There are some spacing requirements to work with and how many systems that require adding on to existing systems or creating a few new systems. In the intermediate list of projects, there is the, the, um, treatment at 707 and, and 17, Burgess Road, 707. It's, it's, in terms of that type of intersection, that, that's a relatively low-dollar project and, and something that could be done within the scope of a, of a GSAT's TIP budget. Another one on there that I, I think we kind of blew by in the animation was the entrance to Litchfield Country Club, which has been a problem for, for a lot of years. And a lot of people have looked at it, us included, DOT included, several consultants and plans included. And this time they've come up with something that I think really has a, an excellent chance at, at working. It would be adding additional signals to the area, but it would allow for people to exit and enter Litchfield Country Club safely and orderly with not too much delay on, on the main line. It's, I, I thought, when I saw it, I thought it was a, a unique approach and certainly one that deserves additional consideration. If you go to the next page, the, continue with the intermediate project recommendations, and that's by far the, the longest list of projects that we've identified. And, and the last group on the, the long-term recommendations, there is the alternative there, the, the first one, to the 707, 17. It is an interchange and it's about 10 times the cost of the intersection treatment. That's, will be some, some impacts to, to local built environment, the businesses around that, that area. But it will, it, it's something that's there as an idea if and when the time comes in the future. The six-lane section at 12 and a half million dollars is, is in this group of projects, as well as a reconfiguration of the, the traffic on the top end of the South Causeway, the westernmost portion of the South Causeway. All of the information and supporting data is available on the webs, website, gsats.org. This whole report with the turning movement counts and everything is, it's about 750 pages The study documents, or, excuse me, the study documents a 2% per year growth in vehicular traffic, traffic trips. That may not mean a whole lot to you, but I'll just tell you 1% per year growth is a very strong number in terms of, of traffic growth. 2% has been demonstrated over time. We're seeing almost 3% in the Brunswick County portion of our study area. So it's, it's consistent along the corridor. Obviously, it's higher in Myrtle Beach, and typically our traffic volumes have grown from the, the southern end where there are the lowest number of trips to the county line where there are the most number of trips. The one thing that we have seen in, in the past, this last long-range plan we did, and it was backed up by this study as well, was that there's a bubble in the Paulies Island, Litchfield area, where you're seeing trips circulate more in that area. So those numbers in Paulies and Litchfield are higher than the numbers just north. They pick, pick back up once you get up to the, the upper ends, you know, past, you know, where the, the six-lane configuration is, is looked at up Bellamy and, and to the north of there. And, and again, those are the strongest traffic numbers. The end product is, is an analytical approach to addressing continued growth on the network to identify the problems and recommend conceptual solutions. If the GSAT's Policy Committee amends its existing long-range plan to include this study, then the projects would be eligible for federal funding. If the county chooses to seek funding, it would be awarded based on a competitive basis with all other projects in our South Carolina planning region. So the, the only way something out of this plan would get put into a budgeted TIP as an existing project would be when funding becomes available. And we're, we're in a phase right now where we've requested project ideas from our local governments, that the local government would have to agree on the, the project, they wanted to forward it for funding. Then it would be ranked and it would be done in order of its ranking. So that doesn't, even if you want to do something, it's on the list. If it doesn't score high enough and the money runs out before we get to the project, it's, it's not a part of the budget. It stays on the long-range plan and is there for when additional funding would become If you would think of it in terms of a menu of project ideas, the county does not want to pursue a project. There is little chance of it being done. And I don't say no chance because just the fact that we're dealing with US routes and if there were an issue, say a safety issue, and the feds, I mean, they, they've said that they would come in and fix a problem if nobody else fixed it. I've never seen it happen, but I, I don't want to give you the impression that there's no possible way anything could be done. It's just extremely unlikely that it would. And if, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Yeah, Mark, there may be, in fact, I've already seen a little resistance to reduced conflict intersections. Have there been enough reduced conflict intersections installed in the, in the United States to where data has been gathered that shows, you know, analytically how they improve safety?
As a matter of fact, yes. And the, the guru of the reduced conflict intersection is a professor at NC State. I've heard him speak at meetings remotely lately, but, and there is a definite safety benefit. The reduced conflict means you're reducing the amount of chances of vehicles paths crossing each other. So a typical reduced conflict intersection would reduce those conflict points in half. And some of those are more serious conflict points would be removed totally. The chance of T-bone crashes and head-on crashes would, would practically be eliminated from that mix. So yeah, there is, there is significant data and it's 75% around there, fewer inters, fewer accidents at these type of treatments. And like I say, they can be signalized or unsignalized. You'll see some signalized ones on 17 up in Brunswick County in North Carolina. They, they've initiated a path of installing these for the length of US 17 from South Carolina to Virginia. That, that's their stated goal, that they want to incorporate this treatment for the entire length of US 17 in North Carolina. So it's, it's new, but it's not that new, and there is data to back it up.
Great. Thank you.
Um, the, the figures that you got in your address, is that included in your land actuation? Um, no, no. I mean, if, if it's obvious that right-of-way, if there were, you know, additional lanes needed and there weren't existing right-of-way, then they would, they would have figured that in. But what this has done, and even up in Merle's Inlet, it's, the, the right-of-way needs are kept to a minimum. Now, I will say that those are current dollars, so the longer, you know, if you're doing a project that's in the long-term bin, by the time you get to it, the price is, is going to have escalated with inflation. And sometimes with these things, hyperinflation, we're seeing things that we used to be able to do five, six years ago, the costs have doubled.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a few comments.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, Mr. Oheller, I want to, first of all, commend you and parts of the work that have been done. I've got some issues. That should probably be no surprise to you. But the, parts of the study that I found that were positive, the underlying data and analysis are good. I think some of the signalization plans are, are certainly good, like the inner, signalized intersection, Highway 17 bypass, 17 Business and Merle's, the proposal for Litchfield Country Club, the acknowledgement of the bike-ped system, transit opportunities, so on, and certainly minimizing the number of additional lanes of traffic where possible are all good. The things that I do find troublesome however is that the series of hearings that we had were piggybacked onto the Compris of Plan public hearings and also piggybacked onto the, the StanTech study, the companion corridor study. And input was taken, but no alternatives were offered. So when this study came about, even though these are recommendations, it's conceptual, et cetera, basically we're seeing one idea. We're not seeing more than one idea, and there was no discourse about the ideas presented until the final draft. You know, secondly, I've stipulated in some of my writings that SC DOT's agenda, of course, is to move vehicles as fast as possible within a certain margin of safety. But sometimes that comes at, to, at an expense to the community and community character. So even though, though I recognize that some of these ideas are conceptual, some of the issues that I think still confront us are that the use of medians is overplayed. This is one of the very things that created a lot of outcry several years ago. The public overwhelmingly was in this favor of, and cutting off the, or, or creating impediments to cross-communication across the highway for vehicles and pedestrians for considerable expanse of the highway is a problem. The way the medians complicate beach access at Litchfield Drive and, and some of the other locations, the North Causeway, South Causeway are a problem too. You actually have to go by the turns to the beach and then do a U-turn and come back to get to our primary beach accesses. Same goes for some of the connector roads to parallels to 17 and some of the surrounding communities, even though we're supposed to be talking about interconnectivity. The reduced conflict intersection makes pedestrian crossings difficult and complicates vehicular circulation. It's just not appropriate for our community. I do think that if in more rural parts of 17, that kind of design works and is acceptable. I've been up to Brunswick County in Wilmington and I've seen them in place. But in a, a, communities that have a, a more density like the Paulies Island, Litchfield area, I just don't think that's the right, the right tact. And I saw very few crossings for bike-ped or, or just in general. And I like roundabouts, but the roundabout at Kings River and Waverly, I think is going to be problematic. We- We have temporarily postponed a roundabout at Pettigrew and Waverly because it involved taking down a tree that's probably two to three feet in diameter. Well, some of the oaks at the Waverly-Kings River intersection are more like six, seven feet in diameter, so I think that that's going to be a problem. I didn't see a lot of coordination between the Companion Corridor land use study, and these studies were supposed to be coordinated. I know that there was discussions, but I don't see evidence of that in the graphics where the STANTEC study proposed crossings. I didn't see a similar thing in the AECOM study. So there's just not, they're not coordinated at this point. So I don't like to posit problems without a few recommendations, but, you know, one idea is slow traffic down. If the SEDOT agenda is to move vehicles as fast as possible, what if it does take 10 more minutes to get through Paulie's Island-Litchfield? If traffic is slowed to 35, I think you've achieved the same safety effects as you would with a reduced conflict intersection. Plus, you make it more opportunistic for pedestrian crossings, bike-ped crossings. Manage the right-hand side of the highway in more densely dense areas such as Paulie's Island. Provide curb and gutter with clear access points to properties. That'll create less friction and, I think, achieve the same effect as a median. And it'll make having a bike path along those roadways a lot more safe. And then, again, honor the Companion Corridor study with respect to its recommendations. So applaud the idea that we are going to have a more public hearing, because I think there needs to be more discussion. And aspects of the study are good, but I think it falls short of, and its design concept for maintaining the character of the community and would be greatly transformative, I think, to the character of the community at its detriment. We're a tourist-oriented community. Part of the reason our people come and visit and come to live is the character and the charm of the area, and ultimately, we want to maintain that. And the design of that highway is probably the most significant aspect of maintaining that charm and character. So, but I appreciate your time.
Okay. A few things that you said I'd like to comment on. As far as there being an SEDOT agenda, that's fiction. There is no SEDOT agenda. SEDOT is a planning partner with us. They have, they have never come to us as a planning group and say, boy, we need to move these cars along. They're trying to get to Wilmington from Charleston, it's taking too long. That doesn't happen. And sitting in Columbia, they're not interested in that at all. The impetus for the access management projects came from within the planning area, from local planners and staff. We had to convince SEDOT because the adaptive reactive signal systems at the time had never been implemented in the state of South Carolina. We had to drag them kicking and screaming to the table to get these improvements put in. So there is no SEDOT agenda to move traffic.
Not a formal agenda, but any transportation engineer I've ever worked with wants to move vehicles, again, within a margin of safety, as fast as they reasonably can. And sometimes slowing vehicles down can achieve the same safety effects, and it just obviously takes longer to get through town that way.
Yeah, and I would just say to that, that vehicles drive for conditions. If the conditions warrant a certain speed, people will go that speed regardless of the posted speed limit. And if you're unnaturally slowing traffic down that wants to go higher in speed, then you're creating more friction with the person that's obeying the speed limit and the person that's driving to the condition of the road. You'll see that along US 17, where the speed limit is reduced as you're going north from 60 to 45. There's a lot of friction that occurs in that area now because you've got people that do not slow down. They continue to go 60 because nothing in the visual or traveling environment has changed. It's still the same environment, they still continue. And then when they hit the south end of Paulie's, they slow down. You've got all the curb cuts, it naturally slows the traffic down. The same people that are going 60 are now going 40, just because of the built environment.
Well, we do agree, road design does influence driving behavior, no question about that, but...
If I could speak to the bike-ped issues, five years ago, SEDOT has just done this recently, but five years ago, when we adopted our most recent long-range plan, we adopted a complete streets policy. And what that says is that everything we do, every intersection, every widening, every new location, will take into consideration the addition of other modes of travel. So bike, ped, multipurpose pathways, transit stops. So we've made that commitment. So there won't be anything done in the GSAT's planning area that doesn't factor those improvements into any project.
It's good to hear.
I think I've said enough.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions, Mr. Ohweller? Comments? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We now have our updated budget report from Madam Administrator.
We are still working on some tweaks for the FY '22 budget. As I have made you aware, the county has received our first allocation from the American Rescue Act funds. That is a little over $6 million. We are working to allocate some of those funds into the budget for next year. As I mentioned earlier, certainly one of the things that we are looking at is allocations for pay for employees. The rules certainly are very different than what we saw with the CARES Act, but there are rules that we are working to make sure that our folks qualify for and that can receive allocations from those monies. As soon as we have that information, we will forward that information out to you to take a look at. We will incorporate it into the budget information and other tweaks that we've made in the last couple of weeks for the vote for the budget on June 22. If you have anything that you need to mention to us that we need to make sure is included, please feel free to send me about that as soon as possible. I think I do need to make clear, we will come back to council probably three or four times during the next year with different phases of allocations from the American Rescue Act monies. We have received pretty substantial requests and lists internally and externally for our organization, and we will be making the plans, making sure all those folks qualify, and in turn, we'll make recommendations to you on how we believe those monies should be Very quick budget update, it's still a work in progress.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from council, comments?
Yes. Madam Administrator, would it be possible to extract information concerning the various studies that we have commissioned, say, in the last 18 months, showing the reason for the study, who's awarded the study, what was the cost of the study, what's the current phase of the study, if it's Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4, and what dollar amount has been attached to it? And then as a result of getting these finished studies, have we utilized or act on the recommendations? Can that be extracted so we can, looking at also monies that we are allocating to studies?
Sure. Sure. We can certainly get that information for you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Madam Administrator. Being that there is no further business to come before council, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor of that motion? Please stand adjourned.